For your attendance, look forward to a good meeting, get a lot done. Before we begin the meeting, I did want to inform everyone that Bobby Dyer will not be in attendance today due to the death of his mother, and I know that you all know his mother's funeral is next Saturday. Also, Rosemary Wilson is on family vacation this week, and Shannon Kane is out on business this week, and so they will not be in attendance. All that being said, we'll go ahead and get started with our city managers' briefings. And Patty Phillips is standing up there, ready to go. So we welcome you, Patty.
Thank you very much.
This will be on the biweekly pay that we've dealt with some time ago.
Council, Mayor, members of council, I'm here to give you a status of where we are on the implementation of the upcoming biweekly payroll. And before we get started, you see the room is pretty full, and I would say 90 percent, 75 percent of the people in here at least are, have been working on this project. So this has been-
Well, I know you all have been working on it for how long?
A long time.
A long time. So thank you all for all your hard work to get to this point.
But there's been a lot of planning, and so it's really been a true team effort. David Hartzog is the payroll administrator, and Trish Donahue is our financial services coordinator. They've been sort of working with everyone to get us where we are, and as you hear in a few minutes, it's a good plan. And we heard of the bluff, the bottom line up front. This is bottom lines up front. Three things I wanted to communicate here to you today is we're going to convert to a biweekly pay system next January. It is the next step after a successful arrears implementation last May of 2014. And we will also do some technology improvements and efficiencies as part of this process. And as you'll hear also later, it really positions the city to do further improvements in the coming years. There is transition pay of 1.2 million, and that's included in FY '17 budget, and that's essentially a transition supplement for three paydays of $70 across the board. It's not a percent of your pay, it's a flat amount for everyone to assist in the transition. This is a change, and we want to minimize the impacts if we can. There's also a component on employee preparedness and education. And you'll hear a lot of the people in here have been working on providing resources to employees to assist them in making this change. We hear about biweekly, and what is it? Basically, you get paid every two weeks instead of semi-monthly. Payday will be every other Friday. The first biweekly payday is Friday the 13th, lucky, Friday the 13th of 2017.
You know where to start, don't you?
The moon and stars lined up. It covers the new biweekly pay period effective December 22nd and through January 4th. So nine days in arrears, payday will be the 13th. The pay will be for 80 hours instead of our nominal 86.67 hours. I joke about this 86.67, and that no semi-monthly pay period ever contains 86.67. But that is the basis of how we calculate your rate of pay, your overtime, all of that. It's very confusing for employees. Deductions are covered either on 24 or 26 pay periods, paydays. You will hear that some deductions will have to stay 24 times a year, but as many as we can move to 26, we're moving to 26. For example, VRS will stay 24, healthcare will go to 26. No change in the work week, it's still going to be Thursday through Wednesday. Salary, leave accruals, VRS benefits, your pension, your retirement, nothing changes. Everything will stay the same. Employees will continue to be paid for the time they worked. What are some of the advantages for employees? First of all, you're going to get paid, you can count on every other Friday, every 14 days you're going to get paid, not 13 days, or 16 days, or 18 days. You will avoid having three weekends between paydays, and that can be difficult for some employees. The pay period and the work week will now coordinate. It'll be easier to understand for scheduling, for shift work, for overtime, and as we'll talk a little bit more later about FLSA. And overtime will be paid closer to when it's actually earned. Overtime can actually be paid the following pay period, or even two pay periods later, depending on how the pay periods fall. So it's not the ideal situation for employees. And I wanted to point out, too, two of the 26 checks a year will have fewer deductions, so they will be used for additional benefits to the employees. This is an example of the difference to employees of semi-monthly versus biweekly. And this in this example is a $52,400 employee, and under the semi-monthly column, there'll be two paychecks a month, and the monthly is $4,366.67. Under biweekly, most months, 10 months a year, you'll get two paychecks, two months a year, you'll get three. And which months they are may change in each calendar year. In 2017, that's three payday months, June and December. At the end of the year, their salary that you're paid is the same amount, except in 2017, because of the transition pay, it'll be $210 more. And so the gross monthly check will differ, be different, but not your salary. And that's important to stress, that your salary is not changing. What are some of the advantages for the city? First of all, analytics between pay periods become more meaningful. When we have a pay period, a semi-monthly pay period will have different days each semi-monthly. Managers comparing overtime from year to year is more difficult. Improves reporting, assists with management oversight, and greater accuracy in reducing risk. And I'll talk a little about that. You know, why can't payroll be exactly accurate? It's because of the way the pay periods fall. We'll optimize our system capabilities and the way we configure it. Right now, we have four patches a year to our system. That's just to keep the system current. Every customization we have in there creates more difficulty in terms of implementing those patches, testing those patches becomes more expensive. We think that will be greatly reduced under a biweekly system, because that is the basis for the whole system to start with. Oracle produces the standard as biweekly. And we also will eliminate the need for a shadow system to compute overtime hours that we do today. And as I alluded to earlier, it will position the city for more technology efficiencies, system-wide scheduling, workforce planning, automated time and leave, mobile device time entry is our dream moving forward, and future cost accounting. We think that we'll be adding more value instead of shuffling papers. Arrears reduced a tremendous amount of paper shuffling. Biweekly will reduce more. Just some data we collected on biweekly. The Bureau of Labor Statistics says about 70 percent of employers with over 1,000 employees pay on a biweekly basis. Hackett Group, which is a well-known technology consulting group, says in the U.S., most payroll organizations prefer biweekly, because it means that you can meet statutory requirements and provide other payroll and accounting benefits. Looking across Virginia, all the larger jurisdictions are on biweekly. I think it's interesting, Norfolk is going biweekly at the same time Virginia Beach is. We've been meeting with them and comparing information. Chesapeake is also planning sometime in 2017. They don't have an exact date yet, but they are working hard to make that happen. We got a quote, we called George Mason University, because we heard they had converted some employees to biweekly, and want to know how it went. And they said they now have the goal of moving the whole university to biweekly. And their quote is, "Because it's so much easier for overtime-eligible folks." I thought that was pretty telling. Some efficiencies for biweekly. We're going to align the pay period with two work weeks, so it's exact match. The 80 versus the 86.67 hours, FLSA rules will be based on the work week. Overtime hours are computed offline, we will now do it within the system. And just as an example of what this overtime business is, why do we have to have overtime computed either manually or in an Excel spreadsheet, and then manually get it into the system? You've got a portion of a work week in the pay period, then you have a work week, and then you have a portion of the next work week in the pay period. So you don't know what your overtime is going to be until you've got through the whole work week. So there's delay in paying overtime. So you can see that the reduction to risk is pretty big when you have to do your overtime that way. Right now, in Virginia Beach, overtime costs are in the $16 million range. We think even a small overtime rate, overtime error rate could be as much as half a million a year in terms of a benefit. It's a big deal for us. Some of the things that we are, that you'll hear over time, the communications. There's been a BEAM articles, and member updates are planned. I think one is going out tomorrow morning. Many resources are available to help employees understand how this will impact their particular situation. BeachNet, we've established a biweekly internet page. FAQs, links, telephone, and email assistance, information is available. There's a paycheck calculator. You can go in and see, okay, here's what my net pay is today, here's what it will be under biweekly, and how can I influence that. Five biweekly resource days have been planned. External partners Bank On, Live Simply, Empower Great West, ICMA, and Beach Municipal Federal Credit Union will be present. And they're basically, it's a six-hour timeframe in half-hour segments. You can come in, sit through, based on your schedule, and get one-on-one help if you need it. There's a toolkit out there that is available. We're basically telling employees, think about your automatic bank withdrawals, budgeting, savings plans, and how you need to change them. Calendar events, MASH to Your Money series, Bank On classes, as an example. So in summary, we're converting in January, will be paid every other Friday, by direct deposit, by the way. VRS and most benefit deductions will be 24, medical, HSA, child support, United Way, liens, garnishments, taxes will be 26. Special thank you, as you can see, there's a huge effort that's gotten to this point. Management leadership team, department directors, Human Resources Department, Regina Hilliard, Donna Mickley, Bill Edwards, Melissa Bowers. Consolidated benefits, it's a special thank you, Lynda Matkinson and her team for assisting us on the 26 deductions for healthcare. The IT folks, Ann, Teri, Debbie, the web team, Scott and Jason, the credit union, Diane Accounts. Diane, are you here?
I'm here.
Human Services, the Bank On, Lori Erwin. Thank you for helping. Library Department has the Live Simply program. Ashley Barineau, Christine Brantley, I don't know if you guys are, yeah. They've been, Police, I see Suzie, Fire, Mike, and Jenny are here. We've been talking to them for quite some time, in terms of making sure we all understand what's about to happen. They deserve a lot of credit to get us where we are today. So with that, if there's any questions.
Well, we're going to thank everyone, too. We know a lot of time has been spent on this, and we were, you know, advised to do this, and we're doing it. And so thanks to everyone for letting us get there. John?
How is the VRS, are you just going to collect it over 26 pays and separately make a bi-monthly payment to VRS in Richmond?
We looked at that, John, spent a lot of time on that, but we concluded that the time it would take to figure that snarl out is not worth it, and the amount of impact is so minuscule that we are going to pay them 24 times a year, deduct it 24 times a year.
Okay.
The other complicating factor was the hybrid employees. There's a match, and I started looking at the snarl here. I'd actually gotten to the point, I'd figured out the algorithm that we need to do to make, as you're describing, and we were just digging a hole.
We just have to pay them 24 payments, but not on a specific day?
Once a month, I think, David?
Right, okay, just curious. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate everybody's hard work. We'll now go to interim financial reports. Golly, you're not leaving yet, Patty.
No, I'm not. Wait, 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 I need five.
Thank you all for coming over today.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Well, this one is so much easier. You should have received in your package the interim financial report from May, and a lot of things are happening here. We're just going to focus on the general fund as we normally do, revenues and expenses, and we'll do a little stab at where we are going to end the year.
I've got a number.
Okay, I have a number. The general fund, just, you know, this is it in a nutshell, one chart. At the end of May, we collected 847.9 million, and spent 973 million. Some of our charts, we've updated through today, you know, verbally, just to see that revenues continue to come in, that gap is closing pretty quickly, as it always does. Here we are on our trend line, our averages are red. Our blue is where we actually are, we're actually slightly ahead of where we are. But that last June, and then of course the closeout period of July, and part of August, brings us back to that 100 percent. So we've 847.9 million in revenues, with a budget of $1,455 million. We still need to collect some, but the gap is closing, includes tax relief, and we still have a couple things in a lag that we accrue at year-end. This is our chart on real estate, and 417.2 million on a trend line, we're doing very well. We looked at the revenues as of today, and we are continuing that trend line. So that gap is closing. Our revenues are going to do much better than last year, of course, but the budget is a little aggressive, so we may be slightly under budget on this one. Personal property taxes, 62.5 million collected, which is also very good. But as of this morning, that number is 91.2 million. So that one will exceed budget.
Lot of new cars on the road. You watch the new car sales, it shows up in the paper. I was expecting a decent number of new car sales, they have been really high this year.
That's great news.
So that one will be over budget by, could be 5 million. General sales tax, also doing well, holding its own, and we checked it as of this morning, and that's still holding its own, still doing pretty well. The business license, we've collected as of this morning, 45.1 million, just slightly more. That may be a hair under budget, maybe as much as 1 million. Hotel room taxes, good story. Mr. Earn's looking at it right now, I know. We've collected 97.2 percent of the budget for the general fund, general fund portion. So that is continuing to perform well. Citywide hotel tax, also 95.5 percent of its budget, we're up 7.9 percent. Restaurant meal tax, also doing very well. We think this one will also be over budget, one and a half to 2 million. Citywide restaurant tax, again, doing very well. And this chart, I'm not going to, we talk about this every month, but of the restaurant meal tax, 3.5 percent goes to the general fund, and then we divide it up amongst the other funds. For the summary, we got a little code here. Some that we think will be under budget are in red, those that we see are going to be over budget, we have in green. And just to use those, I saw a mixed bag there. But in total, which is the, we think we will end the year very well, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But let's just talk for a second about expenditures. Expenditures are trailing. The red line is our trend, the blue is where we are right now. Of course, that's partly because of the hiring freeze that we have in place. This is the breakdown of expenditures. See the variance on salaries, year-to-date is 36 million. That's not where it will be at year-end. I think in the book, we've given you an estimate of the year-end, the fringe benefits, and on down the line. We think that the general fund balance will be between 110, 113 million at year-end, so somewhere over 10 percent of next year's revenues, which is well within our policy, between 8 and 12. But it's important, because we're consistently in that 10 percent range, and we did Mr. Wood's dashboard there. And that's the short version of the May interim.
Thank you, John.
Two questions. Did you go back to the slide that had the real estate tax program expenditures?
The-
Go back for those. It had real estate, showed the real estate.
This one? Right.
Now, that's a tax expenditure, but it's interesting, that's the only tax expenditure that we show, but we have a lot of other tax expenditures in this report. And I would hope at year-end that we maybe could have a separate slide that would show all the tax expenditures that we have, because that is by far, you know, not the only one. It may not even be the biggest one.
This is just budget to actual, where we think it's going to be, and where it's running behind. But I think I understand where you're coming from, and we will see if we can pull something together.
And if we could, after the, this is unrelated to this presentation, which you always do a good job on my side, Patty.
Thank you.
But this goes back to an article that was in the paper about all the properties, real estate taxes that were in arrears. I don't know if any of you got calls, so I got a number of calls from residents saying about what we do about it, and thank you, Mr. Hanson, for giving me that feedback. But I think it'd be good for John Atkinson to come and talk to us about what is the trend, how we go about approaching that, what is our collection, and what's really out there that we haven't collected. I think that would be good to understand, you know, about that, because it's a sizable sum of money, and it was in the paper, and I was glad to see all these people read it and then called to ask you about it. I didn't know, so I went, and John told me. But I think we'd all be better off understanding how that going is, or is there something we can do to help collect that money?
Yeah, John, I've got a schedule that I, we work up for several years, that goes into exonerations, counts receivable balance, and collection rates, and estimates that is very helpful to me, and might be to you, to kind of see where, making sure we're not out of sync.
And could we be more aggressive in collecting? That's thoughtful.
Yeah.
We're doing a pretty good job on the collection. We're doing a pretty good job on the collection.
I'd just like to see-
Okay, fine, fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
All right. Neighborhood navigational, Phil?
Yes, sir. Phil's going to come in and set that up. I asked him to bring forth, there's four major topics that he's going to address today. He's going to address two of our specific neighborhood navigation projects where we've had a change in the participation due to a combination of issues, mainly as we get into the projects and try to get permitted or get land access, things become more difficult than they are in the preliminary engineering phases. And then the third topic he'll talk about is, we're actually in the process of finalizing the re-rate structuring of our first completed project at Bayville Creek, contract's been completed. We have the actuals, and we have the, kind of some analysis there of what the neighbors went in at, and where they ended up at, and what the construction costs are. So this is our first real rate recalculation, based on actual quantities that were dredged. And then the fourth item that Phil will talk about are some of the policy lessons learned and policy changes that we'd like to, we'll be bringing forth to you in the future, and it's kind of a heads-up. This program continues to be a program of firsts. In many instances, a lot of the things we're doing are first times we're doing it, but we are perfecting the processes, and we've got some very large projects coming. And maybe you'd look Councilman Earn in the eye and tell him where we're at in all those projects.
Happy to.
And Rudy, Rudy lives, so he'll quit looking me in the eye. Appreciate that.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. As Dave said, we have two items on your agenda tonight, but it was a good opportunity to provide you a background on those, as well as bring you up to date on that Bayville Creek rate adjustment we're working, and those proposed policy changes. First, let's start off with Herd's Cove. This is a removal of 16 properties from the proposed district. This is the adopted map. All those properties boxed in red were initially included in the district. And this may not be fair to characterize it this way, but this is the way I see it. A lot of these properties wanted to be included in the project.
Pointer, pointer right there for you, buddy.
And they were way upstream. So in some sense, I kind of consider them aspirational. They really wanted to get the dredging to them, and so they begged to be included, and we included them. But what we remind all of these neighborhoods when we brief them, we use this slide over and over again, we remind them of the risks. We're never sure we're going to be able to get a permit to go that far upstream. There's also the potential for real estate problems. In the Commonwealth, you can own down to mean-low water, and if mean-low water extends out into the waterway, that property owner can have control over whether or not the dredging project happens. Well, indeed, that turned out to be the case here in Herd's Cove. This is one of the upstream reaches. Shaded in yellow, that entire area is above mean-low water. That's all mud flat. Now, it's a minor detail, it's actually a major detail, but you may recall that when we adopt these districts, we haven't done a field survey. It's a very expensive survey to do, so we kind of adopt them somewhat blind, without real data. Once we did the survey and saw the extent of mud flats, basically every square foot of channel dredging beyond that line would have been an impact to mud flats, where we would be required to pay mitigation. And the mitigation costs were huge to include these upper reaches. Beyond just knowing the cost for mitigation, we had some serious concerns as whether or not the agencies would allow a permit to be issued. So we called the agencies in on this project, showed them the maps, talked it through, and got pretty much a resounding no way on getting a permit for these properties. So we worked with the community leadership, and we had a series of very detailed, long meetings. We went property by property, looking at these things, and we came up with 16 properties proposed for deletion. Had we had left all them in, if it were even possible to be permitted, the mitigation costs almost would exceed the construction costs. The mitigation costs would have been as much as $1.8 million for this neighborhood. So we worked and worked, and there were also some instances on that previous slide about risk, where property ownership extended out into the creek, and it happened to be an unwilling property owner, somebody who was not willing to participate in this program. You recall, we have an 80 percent threshold. That implies that as many as 20 percent of the participants may not be fully willing. We had the case here, as in other districts, where there was an unwilling property owner, where we needed their consent to cross their property, and we were unable to get it. So after working with the community leadership, we came up with 16 properties to remove. I apologize, the Friday package- I apologize, the Friday package, slide presentation that we sent out to you only had thirteen properties listed. We neglected to, to include these three properties, excuse me, Dave, in that graphic. But those two are being proposed for deletion. You'll see that most of them are in the very upstream reach where, quite frankly, it's questionable whether or not that water was ever navigable. It, it, it is just total mud flats and the ability to get a permit was, was virtually impossible. So after having worked with the leadership and coming up with this list and figuring out the impacts, we invited all of the community participants by letter to come and meet with us again so we could explain this deletion and the financial impacts that would incur or result from the deletion. We briefed them. We showed them this chart, and this chart has a big note at the bottom, disclaimer. This number, this average cost per property owner or the total sixteen-year estimated cost is overinflated. It is generated based on our initial formulation process where we assume five percent inflation for the next sixteen years. When we actually do the first dredging and we adjust the rate the first time, we're not using that five percent. We're working with management services, with finance, and trying to come up with a more accurate representation of what inflation has been and what it's projected to be. And we're also using actual assessment growth, not predicted or guessed. You might recall that we assumed zero assessment growth in our initial assumptions, trying to be conservative. When we go for rate adjustments, we're going to use the real trend so that we don't end up over-collecting and we, and we end up zeroing out at the end of the sixteen-year project. So we, we had that meeting on the twenty-seventh and, and we characterized, it was very well attended. Dan, there was at least sixty people in the room. And so the majority of these property owners came to the meeting. And my characterization of the meeting is those that were willing and had signed willingness petitions are still willing, even given these higher cost potentials. Those that are still opposed are now even more so. So there's a potential that there will be some folks to speak about this tonight. That, again, the, the vast majority, and, and we held this meeting on April twenty-seventh and we have not received any feedback from any of them yet, written, phone calls or otherwise. So as we left the meeting, we left the meeting feeling very strongly they still wanted to go forward. So we're recommending these sixteen properties for deletion. In Chesapeake, in a separate ordinance you have, we have two properties to be removed, but for different reasons. Actually, for that real estate reason, but even still, a slightly different reason than that. These two properties were, were really aspirational. This is Tom Duckett's property, he's a great guy. He, he is not waterfront, but he begged to be included because he wanted to work a deal with his neighbor and get an easement or some, some access to the water so that he could participate with the community and the program and, and realize his navigation dreams. But after two years of trying, he wasn't able to get there. He's been paying the extra fee and, and he now would like out. And so we're recommending that he be taken out because he cannot be served. And the same is for the second one, JH Trust property. They're actually blocked, they're landlocked, unable to get to the channel. They too were attempting to work that out and it just wasn't happening. So we're recommending it be removed too. Very small impact to this project. There are one-hundred-and-thirty-three properties involved in the original project. These are two properties that we're hoping to make something happen. They couldn't make it happen, so it's, it's time to remove them, we think. I also want to call your attention to, to a potential second removal for Chesapeake Colony. This relates back to that real estate risk that, that a property owner may have interests out into the waterway who may not be a willing participant, who may not be willing to grant us access across this property. So what we have here are eight properties that are so constrained. There is a property owner who is unwilling to, to grant us a right of entry across his bottom lands, across his mud flats. And it's essentially then therefore blocking seven other properties from, from participating. Now, the community's asked us not to take these eight properties out of the district yet. What we've done is we filed the permit applications without including them. And they're continuing to try to work the issue and see if they can't resolve it. If they can resolve it, we'll ask for a modification of the permit and include them. If ultimately they cannot resolve it, we'll probably be coming back to you in the future with a recommendation to remove them. So those are those two deletion ordinances we have for you. Now on to the fun stuff at Bayville Creek. Yes, sir.
Can you go back to that other one? Can you go back to the?
Yes, sir.
So is there any opportunity? I understand you can't dredge in front of the unwilling property owner. But can we get a permit to dredge the parts that you do unwilling folks? And I understand that at,
You mean leave a gap in the channel, maybe?
Well, at low tide, you wouldn't be able to get out, but at least you could float a boat while you were there.
Thank you, sir. We did look at that, you know, the water there is so shallow that to leave a gap would be a problem. It, it would maybe even come to the point of presenting a hazard to navigation, even though it's an idle speed zone. We, we tried our best. We, we, we'd have to skinny the channel down to a ten-foot width and put it all the way on the opposite side of, of the waterway and impact more wetlands to avoid that property. And frankly, a ten-foot channel's too narrow. There's no equipment available that can get in there and get that done. So for, at least for now, we're keep, we're proposing to keep them in the district. If, if they're unable to resolve it, we, we'd come back and, and bring another ordinance to you for, for consideration.
Thank you. Hold up, Phil.
Barbara, did you have something now?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you take these properties, eh, of Herd's Creek and Chesapeake, do you still have eighty percent?
Yes, ma'am, in both cases, almost eighty-three percent, eighty-two point nine in both cases. Now, I don't think that's codified or, or requirement that, that adjustments to the district still have to cross that threshold, but I'm happy to say they do.
Since we're at a shelter here on the Herds because of the increased cost
Yes, sir.
versus, you know, what was originally stated.
Right.
I thought Mark indicated to me they'd probably have to take a revote.
Well, that's a, that's going to be.
It's a proposed policy change that, that we're working on, that, that I close this presentation with. It's one of the lessons learned that we're thinking we're going to have to address in our council policy.
Well, see, you're ahead of me.
Well, no, sir, I'm not. You know that.
Also, if I could get a list of those sixteen properties that are taken out of Herds, I'd like to see that before the vote, if at all possible.
It, sir, it should be an attachment to the ordinance tonight. Attachment A, I believe it's titled.
Okay, thank you.
Attachment B. And, and they're listed there with property owners or just?
Defense and street addresses. And then there's an HC number that's keyed to the map. There should also be a map included.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So on to Bayville Creek. You know, the good news is we have successfully completed this dredging project. The neighborhood is very happy with it. We've heard some great comments. But the cost came in significantly higher than originally assumed when adopted. And I'm going to go through the hows and whys of that here and, and let you know what the numbers are. This is not on your agenda tonight, but it's coming in the near future. So if you, it's kind of hard to see, but if you see our initial alignment was, was a rather simplistic channel. Once, and that, upon which we based our volume estimates and our cost estimates and so forth. Once we adopted the district and started working with the property owners, we modified the channel to their desire. And it ended up being a longer channel, I think some six hundred foot longer than what was originally planned. It's important to remember, as Dave pointed out, this was one of our first projects. It was the second one adopted by council. And when we adopted it, we were still working on a lot of assumptions and, and estimates that, that really we had not truthed yet. And we found out many things during this process and kept the community involved as we went along. But, but the, the changes have resulted in significant cost increase. Here's a list of the changes. As I mentioned, that the, the length and indeed the width in one location were increased with community acceptance. They wanted it that way. One of the biggest cost drivers is the dredge depth. When we adopted this district, we knew there were mud flats in Bayville Creek. And we, we had a sense of what the regulatory agencies were thinking. And we were adopting this district based on a dredge depth of four feet. Well, it turns out in Old Nation Creek, our first project, the agencies let us dredge to five feet. So we went back to the community and said, would you rather have five? It's going to cost more money. And they did. And, and so we, we increased their depth. There were a few other things that happened. We were going to use the Crab Creek dredge material transfer station to be sited out there at, near the Lynn Haven Boat Beach Use Facility. That kind of blew up on us and it didn't happen. And so while this district was adopted with the assumption we were going to use a public facility for transfer, once we lost the ability to transfer at Crab Creek, they had a decision to make. Do you want to wait until we resolve that issue? Or do you want to bear the cost of building a temporary transfer facility within your own neighborhood?
Really, the issue is called the Lesnar Bridge and the lay-down yard.
Right.
Three-year delay trying to get that done and they didn't.
They didn't want to wait.
So we had always told you that we would look at road structure, ability to haul it out of. And so what he's saying is we built a timber trestle, construction-capable pier out there for the backhoes and the dump trucks to back up. And got permission across one of the landowners and compensated him for that, to do that for the neighborhood. And we took it out at Church Point. Of all the neighborhoods, you've run dump trucks for an entire project out. And to my knowledge, we did not have a single complaint up here at headquarters or in the mayor's office during inquiries with regards to our ability to control speeds, control traffic,
Weight limits.
Control spillage, to maintain the roads and to act safely.
Very, very pleased that we, we were able to pull that off without neighborhood angst. We had anticipated that. We'd tried very hard to structure the contract so that we could control all those things and it turned out great. The other cost-driving change or increase that occurred was when we adopted this district, the agencies had not yet taken a firm stance on requiring mitigation cash payment for mud flat impacts. We knew there was required mitigation if we disturbed vegetated wetlands. But it wasn't until we got deep into this project that, that we found they were unmovable on that. We had to pay mitigation costs. That added yet another ninety thousand dollars to the project. So here's, here's the money shot. We, we, we worked with management services, finance. We had Dana and our legal team involved and we came up with what we thought was the best possible way to address this, the actual cost for construction. For all those reasons that I just mentioned, we had estimated it to be just at three hundred thousand dollars when we adopted this district. The final actual cost was in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. But this is where I'm talking earlier about when we adjust the rate, not using five percent inflation for the next fourteen years or twelve years in this case, actually using the assessment growth that occurred already and projecting based on citywide assessment growth, what a reasonable assessment growth would be. So we were able to structure the rate to accommodate this doubling of cost by, by increasing the rate just a little over twenty cents per hundred. So in this neighborhood, the average property cost will go up if this rate change is adopted from about forty-nine hundred dollars a year to seventy-seven hundred dollars a year. And it wasn't a fun evening. We invited the community after we had this discussion with finance and, and management services. Came up with these numbers. We invited them all to a meeting and described it to them. They, 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 of course, are not happy, but they understand how it happened and why it happened. They, they at least acknowledge it. And, and with that, in the near future, we hope to be bringing you a recommendation for a rate change for this community.
Also, also during this discussion, the team presented to the homeowners the opportunity to retract dredging two and even dredging three and just pay their debt on dredging one. But they recognized the value of continuing on with the three dredging sixteen-year program. And so this is based on two additional dredgings and continuing on with the program because they, the distinct value that they got by getting their mud flats taken care of and now have deep access twenty-four seven.
Roger that. So as Dave mentioned, we are working on a series of policy proposals for you to consider. Lessons learned, efficiencies, et cetera. But, but I want to offer you a big caveat here. These are not fully vetted. They, there are departments that have not yet provided input that we need input from. We have not briefed the M L T and the manager, although he's aware of it, he has not signed off on these. So we're giving you an advanced look. We hope that you might give us guidance. Are we headed in the right direction or are any of these objectionable? Or, or whether or not you think we're going in the right direction. So as far as the overall program for establishing the, the SSDs, we'd like to propose that instead of a strict compliance with a four-year calendar, that the rate changes occur after we have an actual dredging contract where we have hard costs, where we, where we're not guessing anymore. So that might be a five-year cycle, it might be a three-year cycle. But, but rather than just the arbitrary, somewhat arbitrary four years, we'd like to bring it back when we have real cost data. We'd also, we're, we're currently basing the split between the city and the SSDs based on volume. So however much volume came out of the city spur channel, that's the city's share. How much volume came out of, of the SSD channel, that's their share. But the policy's silent on it right now. So before we get challenged on that, we're, we're thinking it might be smart to, to go ahead and codify that if it's, if you're in agreement with it. Same thing with mitigation. The, the mitigation costs need to be assessed to whichever party is causing the need for mitigation. So if the, if the spur channel is where the mitigation's being incurred, then the city pays for it. If it's up in the SSD, then the collective community SSD pays for it. If it's individual access basins, then the individuals pay for it. But, but we feel it's important to, to spell that out in the policy. And finally, on, on the overall program, a relatively new recommendation and thought that we're, we're going through is several of these channels up in the upstream ends of them, of course, are where there are large stormwater pipes that are delivering sediment to the creek. And, and what we're thinking is trying to structure a, a change to policy where we might be able to extend beyond that last participant up to that drainage structure, essentially create a four-bay at city expense to try to reduce the sediment load on the SSD project. Again, these, these have not been fully vetted. We're, we're, we're in the talking mode right now and, and looking for head nods or, or head shakes. But, but these are being considered for, for developing for your consideration. Following up on these removal ordinances tonight, we, we think it might be important to, to put some of these things in your policy. When, when the removal of a set of property owners for environmental reasons, for real estate reasons or what have you, if it would cause the SSD rate to increase by more than twenty-five percent, we think there ought to be a breakpoint there where we come and brief you on that topic and perhaps even entertain changing the rate then, along with the deletions. So we don't get these people owing us more money and having to do a super adjustment at year four. And conversely, if, if it's much less than twenty-five percent, and indeed in Herd's Cove, it's net positive for the neighborhood to have dropped those sixteen properties. It, it reduces their costs, it reduces their revenue, but it reduces their costs much more than it reduces their revenue. So they would fall into the second category where we'd go ahead and just propose it without, without adjusting the rate or without proposing adjusting the rate. And then on these removals, I think it's, it's desired that we put in policy our process for returning funds to properties that have been removed. Your pleasure, whether or not you want to include interest on, on that money. And whether or not you want to deduct or charge those property owners who had been in the district for the costs incurred to date. You know, we, we go through an awful lot of cost in Herd's Cove to determine that those properties that were somewhat aspirational are no-go's. Should, should, should they be held harmless? It's your, your choice, but I think we need to spell it out so that we know what we're doing when we do these rate changes or at least propose rate changes. And finally, there's this issue of adding properties to the SSD. We, it's very perplexing. It's, it's very complicated. Chesapeake Colony is a good example. I showed you that slide where there are eight properties that right now we're not including in the permit application. And ultimately, they may come out of the district. And ultimately, they may come out of the district. But ownership changes. And if they've taken out of the district because of the current reality and five years later, ownership has changed, hearts and minds have changed, they see the success of the project and they now want to become involved, how is it fair to, to include them? What would be fair? Should, should the incoming properties who didn't pay that SSD rate for five years, should they in some way make up for that? Should we let them in without making them let it up? I mean, the, the, the concern here really from the community's perspectives, and I hear this all the time from them. So, so we end up leaving those eight properties out. And then they end up getting a free ride because they, they, they dredge a little channel to connect to the community paid for channel. Is that fair? So it's, it's really a complicated issue and we've been struggling with it. I don't, you know, I, I mentioned these haven't been fully vetted. I, I think it's accurate to say Public Works is not in full agreement with what Legal's position is. They have a good position, but to us, it, it, it should be more simple. It should be more doable. But then again, there are real reasons that they have their proposals and, and so we're still working through that. But at some point, we hope to come back to you with a way to include properties, to expand the districts, once they've been established. So those were the proposed policy changes that we're working on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We, 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 I don't see any violent head, head shakes that, that we're going in the wrong direction, but by all means, let us know or... And, and Councilmember Earn, I'm happy to report that this weekend, Sunday, we advertised for construction, three projects in Rudy Inlet, or Rudy Inlet Basin. That would be the Harbor Point Project, the Shadow Lawn Project, and the Lake Wesley Entrance Channel dredging that we plan to do. We've bundled those all three into one contract and it's out for advertisement right now.
John, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. One of the things that we saw for the increase today was the increase of the mitigation cost between what we thought was going to be and what it currently is. And, you know, a lot of the, I mean, this mitigation is to remove mud and a lot of times, which is mud that has been, has accreted because of the outfalls on, you know, from public streets. And then we're having individual homeowners pay mitigation costs to remove something on public property that was placed there due to the public policy that allowed all of that mud and debris to essentially accumulate over time. So, and, and, I mean, you, you've seen some of the impact here in terms of this rate increase, you know, but I, I mean, I'll tell you, it's, it's a pretty big pill to swallow for everyone else who's, who's doing it not just for the public channels, but for the private driveways as, as well. And so I guess Phil or, or Dave, I mean, where are we moving forward to try and get a more accurate number for that, that mitigation fee? You know, another thing of interest too is that that mitigation fee is being used to help with environmental things that are not even in the city of Virginia Beach. Most of them are occurring, you know, in the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, western part of the state. So we've got our homeowners that are paying this big fee to remove stuff that we put there, or not to remove it, but to have the opportunity to remove it. And then those fees are going into a fund.
Virginia Aquatic Trust Fund, yes.
A fund that is doing absolutely nothing for our local waterways or environment.
Mr. Earn, I'm...
It's a number that doesn't make any sense.
I'm happy to report there are two things that are happening in that front. One is, is that although it's still a significant expense to the individual property owners and, and indeed to the SSD channels in the city, we, we were successful in talking them off the cliff. We, we cut it in half from what, from what they were proposing originally. And we continue to work with them to refine the rules. You know, mitigating for a sand flat should be zero. A sand flat, of course, is a lovely thing, but it's, it's habitat value is so much less than that rich, deep molasses mud where, full of worms and, and the other critters that are felt to be important to the environment. So we continue to work with them to refine them. But the biggest thing we're doing is we're advancing the Pleasure House Point Mitigation Bank, an in-city mitigation facility where we're going to be able to create 10 acres of credits at real cost, no profit, just the real cost. And, and our intent and purpose for doing that is to provide a mechanism to mitigate for these impacts without sending a check to, to Tappahannock or wherever the Aquatic Trust Funds address is. So those are the two things we're doing is we're continuing to work with the agencies to refine their process and, and we are actively moving forward to build the Pleasure House Creek mitigation, or Pleasure House Point Mitigation Bank.
What's the timeline on that?
It's funded for construction and it's under design. So I don't know the date of advertisement. Do you have an idea?
It's yet to be determined.
It, it's yet to be determined. We, we, we actually are right now in the process of finalizing what's called the banking instrument, which is the legal documents that establish it. And I believe we have a meeting later this week with our consultants on some updates to that instrument. So it's, it's coming forward. It, it probably won't be there in time for Shadow Lawn and Harbor Point, but it is a way that we are pursuing to, to mitigate those mitigation costs.
One, one additional item. In those policy changes, it's one of the things that Phil mentioned and, and it's an evolution from Senator Wagner's concerns about the mud flats that are creating at the outfalls and various coves that we have throughout the Lynn Haven and our ability to access them. And we really don't have a lot of ability to go in there from land side and dig these things out. They're very difficult. There's a tremendous amount of mitigation that they want because there's generally vegeta, vegetation set up on those mud flats where, where that stormwater sediment has poured out and created that infill into those coves. And so when we're going in on a neighborhood dredging project and we're in that, it's, it, we've been pulling up short at the end of the last property because it gives them access and we're not going in after that mud all the way to the outfall. That's one of the things that people are asking us to pursue because of the mitigation costs and the additional cost expensive of digging it out. But it's a heck of a lot cheaper to do it while I got a barge and a backhoe and a hopper drag, barge to be able to pull it out of there. So that's why we're adding this piece in there at probably city expense to go after and get that. And once this Pleasure House Point, the true cost of a square foot of vegetated wetlands is known and we have a 0.5 factor on a med flat, it should be significantly lower than the, than the price cut that we currently have now, knowing that the true cost of a square foot. Because you're going to use our CIP to construct that bank, to construct those acres of wetlands and they'll be in place, we'll, we'll operate and maintain them so that they're viable. But you will have banked all that acreage for mitigation and you can draw on that banking of that mitigation against your projects at an actual cost.
How will any of these proposed policy changes be done? I mean, this briefing council, I mean, will it, it will take...
It will take an ordinance, yes ma'am, to adjust the rates. And just as removing and adding properties, because it's a tax, will require council action. It'd be nice to think about perhaps being able to delegate the removal of properties to administration, but I don't think you can do that. I think because it is a tax, I think it actually has to come from you. So we're going to be bundling these instead of coming at you. We've had these two at Chesapeake waiting in abeyance for months until we finally resolve the Herd's Cove so we could bring them at the same night and, and not overload your agenda with smallies.
Some of these, you know, seem to be some substantial increases. I'm kind of, I'm concerned about the 20% of the people who didn't want it to begin with.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's kind of tough. What, what recourse do they have? Any? Or what's in there in and there's no...
Sounds like a legal question.
I mean, it's 80% approval.
20% who were not happy, they just stuck with these continued increases and...
I'm afraid they are. Unless you change your rules.
I think 100%.
I mean, there's options.
There's nothing in the world is 100%, isn't that right, Mr. Ross?
Well, only if we make it.
Yeah. Amelia?
I just wanted to ask on your slide 19, where you have the procedures.
19, enter please.
What's the time limit that you gave for letting people know about removing them from the... Is there a set time limit for that?
No, there is not a set time limit. But the, the removal issue arises during, principally during the permitting and contract preparation, when we do the final design and we seek our permits. So it's typically within the first two years. It could be the end of the second year when we finally make the decision that we just can't get there. But there's no time limit. And in fact, in the Chesapeake Colony case, we're beyond our two-year promise to submit permits and go to construction, principally because we've been working with the community to try to resolve these issues. While they all wanted the dredging sooner, they all also realized that we shouldn't rush the failure, that, that we might try to figure this out before we apply for something that won't fly.
A second was just where you were talking about where they had changed your ownership.
Yeah.
Is there anything, because you all will get to know someone passing for sale, that they can, talking with them early enough so that they can include that in part of the negotiation with the new person? It's upsetting because you mentioned that. Do we just let them in even though they haven't been...
Well, that's the problem is right now, it's, the way it's structured is we can't just let them in.
Right.
So, so we're trying to find a way to make that fair and equitable and something that the council can support. And it's been a very difficult thing for us to figure out.
I'm saying talking with the owners so that's included in their negotiation with the new owner.
I, I get what you're saying. Yes, that could be a possibility, but first we'd have to find a way to actually add properties before we could, before we could offer it to potential property owners or potential purchasers as a, as a potential reason to pursue purchasing or, or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Phil, we certainly appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dan.
Good presentation.
By the way, one more second. Dan Adams is, is here with us. He's heading up our coastal section. But I also want to introduce our newest employee, Kerry Kennedy, who just joined our coastal group. He's from the Corps of Engineers. He's got a long history with them and we're very happy to have him on.
We're glad to have both y'all here today. Thank you very much. Y'all have a good rest of the day.
Thanks, guys. See ya.
Okay. We'll now move to the most enjoyable time, city council comments.
Well, mine deals with the agenda, but I think it's appropriate under comments. I've been doing a lot of looking at this oyster trust fund thing and with the help of the city attorney I might ask. And I discovered that back in 2004, on the 11th of May, this body adopted an ordinance and we transferred $70,000 from the Oyster Heritage Trust Fund with the explicit purpose in the ordinance as it's worded, for the development of a plan for restoring oysters in the Lynn Haven watershed. So I've asked the city attorney to go back and, to find, to find the invoices against this $70,000 to find out whether or not the disbursements were really in accordance with the ordinance that was adopted. Because as you know, we discovered because of a citizen's FOIA complaint, or FOIA request, I should say, that since this date, 12 years later, we never actually had a plan. One was never developed. So my point is, I really think that while I know we have an appropriation on our agenda today, I think it would be wise that we first adopt the plan. It's supposed to come us on the 5th and at least get it before we vote to spend the money. I think that would be a wise idea so we can look at that and make sure that what we are approaching.
Does anyone want to object to that? That's fine.
I think I'll make sure that you are aware, I have asked to find out how, where that money gets spent.
So you'll find that probably before we vote?
That's it.
Very good, okay.
So you want to defer it?
Yes, to the, to the day we have the plan. I think 5th of July is the day we're adopting the plan.
12th, I thought. I thought it was the 12th.
12th, whatever day that is, but I just think it ought to come and we could adopt on the same day.
What, what date do you want this day?
12th, fine. I'm looking at Barry. He's going to have the agenda prepared and everything.
Give me that day one more time.
12th of July.
12th of July, thanks very much. I'm used to hearing July, then 12.
That's all my comments are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
That's the whole 12, 1, 2, or A, B's here.
Okay, took care of that. That's great.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll now go to the agenda review. Oh, excuse me, John?
I had one, actually it happens to do with oysters as well. Many of y'all may be aware that Virginia Aquarium had set up an oyster sanctuary on the walkway between the two buildings and they just had their one-year anniversary and it's doing very well. And it is their intent to ask the city for use of, not the whole thing, but a portion of oysters that we've collected there to add to that sanctuary sometime in the very near term. So, you know, it doesn't get as much press as, as the big reefs that are, the Lynn Haven River, but, but it's, it's doing exceptionally well and, and has the need to be expanded.
Good, good. All right. Louis, I'm going to now move to the consignor general. Let's see what we got, sir.
All right. First on the ordinances and resolutions, we just got a corrected version on the first one, which is ordinance pertaining to real estate taxes for elderly.
And that change, it, the, the copy that you got made reference to deferral and that program is no longer authorized by this council. And so that was an inadvertent inclusion and it has been removed from the one that has been passed around.
Okay, all right.
Was that change known when people were signing up this time so that people were able to sign?
Well, it was actually brought to our attention by a citizen. And so I think he is aware that it has been corrected.
But I mean, the, the commissioner's office was, has known so that they could...
No, I think we figured it out this afternoon.
Okay, all right.
All right. Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
I do. I'm dividing the question on nine and I'm not for the consignor general. I want a separate vote on each of those items.
Which items do you want?
Nine A, nine B, nine C, nine D, and nine E. They're all severable ordinances.
So we will pull those?
Yes, please.
Is that the only thing you want pulled?
Exactly. The other deferral thing is fine.
Item number six, I'll be abstaining.
All right. So I had a note that you wanted some others pulled.
I understand City View's their speakers. I understand there's no speaker, but I understand there was a speaker for City View. Is that correct?
I didn't have a speaker when I...
But I want to pull that item as well.
Which one?
That would be item...
Six.
Six.
All right.
Term sheet.
I've got an abstention on item 13-1 for CHKD.
Say that again.
The, um, the item 13-1.
Children's Hospital. Yeah, I've got that.
Okay. Let me, on five, I'll be abstaining on the sanctuary only for the house that has got the sand issue. J6, I'll be abstaining on. And then on J13, the CHKD Emergency Medical Response LLC, Medical Transport LLC, Centerra Healthcare, Centerra Nightingale, Regional Air, Ambulance, Medical Transport.
I'll be abstaining on the deferral now of the Oyster Heritage Plan because I have an oyster lease, so. Okay, so that's it on ordinances and resolutions. On planning, first item Cheryl Scored, trustee for Floyd E. Taylor Irrevocable Trust. That's been amended. What was the amendment on that? Does any...
Correction.
Correct. What was the correction on that?
The, the transmittal letter was incorrect because it included conditions for something else, not this one.
All right. You okay with it?
Yes, yes. I mean, because it certainly can't be the conditions that we had in the transmittal letter. It has to be these corrected conditions.
But you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, Marvin M. Rollins Jr., Gail B. Rollins, trustees. Marvin Rollins Jr., Living Trust, Princess Anne, Ms. Kinnon.
Yes, that's...
Okay. Item three, BRG Cascades East LLC, Centerville. Anybody have a, any comment on that?
Does anyone know what Bobby thought about it?
Uh, he didn't, Mitch, he called me. He did not say anything against it. He did not say anything against it. It sounded super okay.
I talked to him earlier. He didn't say anything. Charles and Kelly Plaza, Prince Sand District, Ms. Henley?
I'm going to move complaints and concerns.
Five, Sinitra Gardner, Kempsville, Dr.?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Six, Diana Wilson, Centerville. Anybody object?
Just family daycare.
Yeah. Seven, Norfolk Airport Authority, Bayside. I'm fine with it. Eight, City of Virginia Beach, change of zoning for all 10 historic Kempsville District. Amelia?
Approved.
Absolutely.
I'm voting no on that item.
Ross, no? Nine, City of Virginia Beach, to amend the official zoning map by the designation corporation additional properties and the historic Kempsville area overlay, Kempsville?
Approved.
Okay. You okay with that one, John?
Yeah, the overlay, but not the zoning.
Thank you, pardon?
Yes, the overlay is fine, we'll set up the zoning.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Thank you, sir. The chair will entertain motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Cut over against amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, asylum, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committee, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Danforth?
Aye.
Lyer, Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
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 Mr. Mayor John?
Aye.
Mayor Sessions?
Aye.